Okay, and it is six, we got. Just a minute, a few more people.
Hey guys.
Hi Chris. How you doing?
Chris, how are you?
Good.
All right. I see, I don't see art, I see Jake. Okay, well, we certainly have a quorum. Okay. All right, so we'll get started. This is a meeting of the Rutland Zoning Board of Appeals, present are related assistant to Mika Murphy, Chris Sannical, Vice Chair, Robert Paulson, Paul Corain, Jacob Morris, I'm Rick Surratt. The first item on the agenda is we've got three petitions, three applications from Accessible Housing for Children, Elders and Disabled LLC. So the first one on the agenda is an application for variance. So I normally would read the standard, but I think the applicant knows what the standard is. So I, what I'm going to do during this meeting is I'm going to, I'm going to ask all the participants, because we've got a lot of people on here, to please, if you want to be heard, to please go through me. And if you want to be heard, you'll definitely be heard, but we don't have a lot of people talking at the same time. So I would appreciate that. So whoever is the lead presenter for the applicant, I would appreciate it if you could just give me a little bit of an overview, and then why don't we start on the application for variance? So if we could start with that, I think that would all work out.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Alex Perrin. I'm an attorney representing the applicant tonight. If I may make a suggestion, the evidence and testimony to be submitted tonight is the same for all three applications, and it may be more efficient for the board to open all three hearings and have them concurrent, rather than going back and creating a new record for each application. So I'd ask the board to do that. The primary presenter in terms of the information to be submitted to you is James Tetra, and he will go over the site plan with you.
Okay, thank you, in respect to the application. Okay, at this time, I want to have, I want to step back, and I want to have a quick discussion with the rest of the board about procedure. Chris, what do you think of the suggestion that we open all three applications concurrently? And then, and then we, because it looks like the evidence and testimony and everything is pretty much the same. What do you think about that?
I mean, at this time, I think in the beneficiary of time, it's probably the right thing to do. You know, it's the applicant's choosing to do it, so I don't see where it's a detriment or anything to the town or this process, and it's only going to help speed things along. Doesn't mean we can't revert to any particular one at any given time, if we feel that's what we need to do, so I'm fine with it, Rick.
Okay, Bob, how do you feel?
I'm fine with it, Rick.
Okay, Paul? Paul, can you hear me?
I'm okay with it, Rick.
Okay, great. And Jake, what do you think?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, all right. All right, so is this something we need to do by motion, or is we can just do this by agreement? What are your thoughts? The rest of the board. Chris, what do you, we need to do a formal motion on this?
Well, I think we might have to, because they listed these three different agendas.
All right, yeah, all right, all right.
I think maybe to cover ourselves, we should.
Yeah, and the rest of the board, do you think you concur with that?
I do.
Okay, all right, so at this point, we would be discussing the motion to join, essentially open and join the three applications. We may vote on them separately, but we will open them, and we will hear evidence and then discuss them, because they're all essentially the same, maybe some legal twist in terms that differentiate them. All right, so do I hear?
I just think the motion should state that per the petitioner's request. So that goes into the record that this is at the petitioner's request.
Yeah, I'm not even sure it rose to the level of a request, I think it was just a suggestion, but I, but we, yeah, whatever word you want to throw in there, I mean, I think, yeah, well, that's fine. All right, I'll couch it as a request. That's fine. So Bob, you're okay with that, and Jake, do you have anything to add?
No, no.
All right, so I'll propose a motion to per the applicant's request to open all three, all three applications concurrently, discuss them all together, and then when we come to the, if we're going to, we're going to vote on them, we can discuss whether we're going to vote on them altogether or separately. I think we probably have to do it separately. All right, so to join and open them together, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye, Chris.
All aye? Okay, all right, so that passes unanimously. So why don't we go back to, is it, it's attorney Perrin?
Yes.
Okay, so could you just give me, give the board a little bit of an overview, since we've got past that hurdle? Or you want to turn that over to, okay?
I think it would be useful for the board to hear from Mr. Tetra, he can go over the site plan in the prior use of the property, and then I would take over from there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
The Tetra, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, so Mr. Chairman, I'm James Tetra from Asmit Land Design here for Accessible Housing for Children, Elders and Disabled LLC. The property in question is on the south side of Barry Paxton Road at a former house number 29. It's the fourth lot in on the right, excuse me, the left, as you come in from Paxton on 122. It's an existing non-conforming lot, the lot has been there since predating the town zoning, at least into the early 50s that we saw with deeds. It's in the R60 zoning district, and the lot has just over 40,000 square feet area, where that zoning district requires 65,340. It also has 101 and change feet of frontage, where that zoning district requires 200 feet of frontage. So in those two different respects, the existing lot is non-conforming. There was a house on that property until 2020, that house was raised, and the applicant is now proposing to construct a dwelling, which will be more conforming than the previous house was. Their previous house did not meet the side setback to the right sideline as you look through the road. And so the applicant proposes to construct a dwelling that would be more conforming, and the applicant is not doing anything, obviously, to change the nature of the lot. It still has the same area, still has the same dimensions, unfortunately, will still, as previously, not meet the R60 area and frontage requirements, but that is not something that the applicant has brought about. It's a pre-existing condition, and one which we believe predated the advent of zoning. So stating that, I will just note again that the proposed house would be, we intend to have served by a septic system in front yard to meet all the front and side and rear setbacks. It will approximately be located with the rear of the new dwelling in front of what was the front of the previous house. So it would be closer to the road than the previous house, which was well set back, but it will be 85 feet back from the road also. I'll just leave it at that, and again, the simple points emphasize that it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot that brings us here.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, so at this time, I'm going to just just give you my thoughts on this, and then I'm going to probably just go down the line with the rest of the board, and we'll get a feel for, you know, the thoughts of the board at this point. So you, there are my, my understanding is that the house was condemned in 2017. And it was demolished in 2020. So according to our bylaw, there's a two-year window from either fire, or the bylaw uses the terms fire and casualty. So if you want to call the decay, the mold, whatever, a casualty, that was 2017. So arguably, we can discuss this, the two-year clock starts running. So as a matter of right, you may have had, whoever owned the property may have been able to reconstruct the house within that two-year window, so arguably, that's gone at this point. So now we're left with a situation where you only have half the frontage that's required under the bylaw. You don't have enough area. And just to sum everything up, you you've got a situation where you're proposing a much larger structure. So your presentation did hit, you know, some positives on this, but the board has a lot to digest. So I, it's, I, you know, I like to go through these things, you know, step by step, but I think that kind of sums it up. We can go through this, and we can talk about it, but just to open this hearing and get things going, I want to, I want to see what the other board members think at this time. So Chris, do you have thoughts at this point on this, on these series of applications?
I got one question, and it might be for the engineer. When I look at the zoning map, this property almost looks like it's in the business district. And I just want clarification that we're using, that this is R60 and not the business. At that part, when you look at the zoning map, that portion, how close are you to that business district? There's a small little piece of business district on that road, right at that corner. The zoning map I have, it's pretty vague, it doesn't get down to the lot line. You guys are aware of that, correct?
Yeah, yes, and it looks like that adjacent zoning is trying to match that adjacent parcel, because you can see both the color and the shape of the adjacent parcel are the same. And we were understanding that that zoning was applying to that adjacent parcel.
Okay, so when you say adjacent, you mean?
Number 23 Barry Paxton Road.
Thank you. So that's to the left of your property, is that correct?
View from the road, yes.
View from the road, yes, view from the road.
To the east side.
Yep, yep, okay. So basically, your property abuts that business district.
That's our understanding, yes.
That's your interpretation, okay. It looked really close to me, and I'm like, boy, I just want to make sure we got the right zoning here, before we go down this whole, you know, road, okay.
If I can just point out also, the building inspector's determination, which, you know, prompted these applications, was that the property is in the residential 60 district, and we're not challenging that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, did you have anything further at this time?
I'm really, I mean, I don't really have too much right now, I just want to hear everything from these guys, and, you know, we'll take it all under advisement and go from there.
Okay, Bob, what do you, do you have thoughts at this point?
So Rick, I guess the question I have is, you were talking about 2017, and now 2020, when it was actually taken down. So do we really know what the timing is, and if it is 2017, outside of the two-year window, does that mean we can't approve it?
Well, there's multifacets to these applications, this is one aspect. It would probably be more applicable to the special permit application. This, this, that factual scenario that I just recited comes from a letter from David McCray, the Rutland Building Inspector, and it's, I believe it's attached to the application, so I think it's pretty much attached to all three of them.
Yes, correct.
So that, so I just took it, took that as fact, and, you know, obviously, the the applicant can rebut that, but but that's what the building inspector is saying, that that's the time scenario.
Okay, and so how about sightlines? Does that come into play at all? Because I mean, when you go up by that property, I mean, that curve is right there, I mean, it's a tough area right there. And I'm just wondering, how many cars are going to be at the site, you know, I mean, it sounds like it's going to be almost like a group home. And so if you're going to have several cars on a regular basis, it just seems like that's going to be quite an area that's going to be pretty busy, that's all, and I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, as far as a special permit, that would be something that we would have to take into account. I think we've got some, you know, pretty substantial hurdles as far as the other requirements.
James Venecasa with the applicant, do you want me to address the, you know, as far as the use of exactly what it's going to be, or?
Well, as soon as, as soon as I'm done hearing from the board, I'll turn it over to you, okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, so Bob, did you, you have?
No, those are a couple of issues I want to understand, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Paul? Paul, did you have any thoughts or comments at this time?
Yeah, just, I did some research looking into it, and it appears to me that the window to, you know, go back on any prior non-conformity is gone.
Yeah, yeah, it kind of looks that way on its surface anyways. Okay, do you have any other thoughts at this, at this time, on any other aspect?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Jake?
On the special permit portion of this petition, I guess you can ask, or we can ask, and it might be a question for counsel, I just don't know whether they're conceding that the two-year window has lapsed, or whether they have an argument that the structure has not lost its non-conforming status. It doesn't sound like it to me. It does appear that it's lost that status, and I just don't know whether there's a, there's a legal argument from the petitioner that it hasn't.
All right, all right, so my thought is, why don't we hear from the other gentleman who wanted to be heard, and then maybe they would want to turn it over, back over to their counsel?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Mr. Venecasa delves into the details of the proposed use, I think you and the other members of the board have identified, you know, an important issue that does need to be addressed with respect to, you know, the status as a non-conforming structure. So the two-year provision in the bylaw has its genesis in 48, Section 6, which says that, you know, a zoning bylaw may define, and I'm just quoting here, may define and regulate non-conforming uses and structures, abandoned or not used for a period of two years or more. So the first thing, and your bylaw tracks that language, not exactly, but well enough. So the first thing that has to be understood is that the use is not non-conforming, okay? The use is a permitted use in the residence district. The, you know, your bylaw defines, you know, the permitted use as a dwelling unit, whether it be single or or two, but a dwelling unit is one or more living or sleeping rooms arranged for use of one or more individuals living as a single housekeeping unit. So the definition is around the single housekeeping unit, meaning you have a unitary, you know, cooking, living, sanitary, sleep, sleeping facilities. So the use that pre-existed, and the use that is proposed complies with the bylaw, and so as to that, there is no question of abandonment, doesn't matter, because we're not asserting the basis for the use as being pre-existing non-conforming, but rather that it conforms to the bylaw. So what we're really talking about is the structure. And as the building inspector noted, we're within the two-year window from the demolition of the structure. I don't believe that if the structure had not been demolished, and we came in with an application for a building permit, you know, that conformed to the building code to renovate the structure, then anybody would say, well, the structure is, you know, you're not permitted to do that. I don't think there's a legal difference here. The time period runs from when the structure was abandoned, and that's when it was demolished in 2020. So I believe that we are within the two-year window, again, as to the non-conforming structure. And the question then becomes, you know, what provisions are applicable to the reconstruction of the non-conforming structure? And you know, we have the three applications in front of you, you know, seeking relief in the alternative. I, you know, if you accept that it is a pre-existing non-conforming structure within the two-year period, then I believe that the reconstruction is permitted as a matter of right under 48, Section 6, which says that, you know, changing a bylaw does not apply to, and I'm just quoting here, the reconstruction extension or structural change of a single or two-family residential structure that does not increase the non-conforming nature of the structure. So we have, we have, in this case, as Mr. Tetra has said, the only non-conformities are as to lot acreage and lot frontage. And we're not increasing those non-conformities. And the only other prior non-conformity was as to the side setback, which were actually decreasing that non-conformity. So the proposed structure is going to comply in every aspect with the requirements of the zoning bylaw, except as the acreage and frontage, which we're not changing. So that's the primary contention as to why we believe it's permitted as of right. Having said that, you do have, in Article 3, Section 13-2, an alternative basis, and again, if you accept the, you know, that we are a non-conforming structure within the two-year period, that you can permit the extension, alteration, change by special permit upon a finding that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the, you know, the prior years. So those are, and I've set aside the variance, because it's a whole different set of issues. But I just wanted to give you our viewpoint as to why the board has the authority, if not the requirement to permit, you know, the reconstruction as proposed.
Okay, all right, so, attorney Terry, you you set forth some pretty sophisticated legal arguments. There are several attorneys on this board. There are some with zoning experience, but I'm not 100% sure that as a board, we want to we either want to or are able to engage in a, you know, in a legal argument with you, and I don't know if that's really the purpose of the board. If we're really going to get into the nitty-gritty as to whether, you know, contrary to what would seem to be the plain language of Section 13-5 of our bylaw, that somehow you can go into 48 and find a justification, we may have to get a legal opinion. All right, so you said, you said your piece, you, you know, you gave quite an argument, but I'm not exactly sure what to do with it at this point, other than maybe discuss it with the board. Did you want Mr. Venecasa to speak at this time?
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, even if the board would not be prepared to, you know, render a decision, given the legal issues tonight, you might as well hear all the testimony and evidence, and then we can proceed from there.
Well, I think so. I think, you know, we've gotten a couple of butter letters, and I, you know, if a butter is a present here, I'd like to have them speak, and certainly, I'd like to hear the rest of your presentation while we are here, I think that makes sense. All right, so you're going to turn it over to Mr. Venecasa at this time?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so go ahead.
Good evening, board. James Venecasa from Accessible Housing. So, you know, what we're proposing here is a, it is a single-family home. There's five bedrooms that will be in this home, there will be, you know, five occupants that will be obviously occupying the room, the rooms. They do have a need for really 24-hour care. It's an educational facility that, you know, we're helping people with traumatic brain injury. 80% of our occupants had stroke, which is, you know, really something that kind of hits, you know, can hit anybody, anybody's, you know, family or anything, it's a, you know, very sensitive thing. This is not a behavioral, you know, home where, you know, people are, we're trying to hold them in the home, or, you know, or do any type of that sort. This is, you know, people that, you know, either This is, you know, people that, you know, either had strokes or, you know, at birth, you know, had some kind of a brain injury that doesn't allow them to, you know, really live on their own. It's, it's not substance abuse. It's nothing of that sort, which is, you know, something that's a common mistake when we are building these. This is a really good thing. It is no real detriment to the neighbors and, you know, it's, 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 it's something that could really happen to any of us. And they do have twenty-four hour care. There is three shifts, three eight-hour shifts per day. There's one to two people per shift that, you know, will be helping them. They will be, you know, working with, you know, our, our occupants as far as, you know, helping them cook, helping them do laundry, helping them, you know, do everything that you and I do in our home. They just, you know, because of something that happened in their, in their life, it just requires them to have somebody that helps them. It's a very good thing and I hope, you know, the board sees it as that and the neighbors would see it the same way.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that. It, it, it sounds, sounds like it's a very worthy organization that, that you're, that you're part of. The, the only question is whether it's
Thank you. It's a great thing to be part of.
Yeah, for this plot. Okay, so before we go any further, I might, I'd like to have an informal discussion with my fellow board members. Chris, after, after hearing all that, do, do you have any thoughts on the direction we should go in at this point as a board?
Um, well, yeah, I, I, I just think, you know, attorney makes a good, you know, an interesting argument. There's a lot of good legal information in there. I would almost, it almost seems like is, 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 you know, and I was through you, Mr. Chairman. I want to almost ask him, is it his opinion that our bylaws are illegal? Or, or not in agreement with the statute of, of, of the, you know, the mass general laws? Because that's something I just want to kind of understand. He, but when, because we have that subsection thirteen point three in the, you know, and, you know, it's, it's, it's very difficult. He takes a certain opinion and I'm not sure if that's his opinion or if it's a fact of law that, that, you know, because when I read this section, a nonconforming use or structure, so use or structure, nonconforming. Then it says has been discontinued or abandoned. So the attorney made a great argument about the use not being discontinued. House was there, you know, less than a year ago and they ripped it down. Now these guys want to put a house up. So that makes sense. Or the structure has been, you know, abandoned. So I like his opinion on just the structure and the abandonment issue. Or, or am I reading this wrong? That's just my, I'm just trying to figure that out in my head here before we kind of get legal counsel and all that stuff involved, I guess.
Well, well, I, I think they're, they're actually citing thirteen, two and thirteen, five. But I mean, I'm looking at, at thirteen, three while you're, while you're talking about it, you know. It's, uh, look, I, I feel very, very comfortable, you know, with our bylaw. But as far as I'm concerned, when, when you, when you start, you start going back and forth between forty A, which is, you know, the, the enabling statute for our, our bylaw. You know, we start going back and forth, you know, I, my, my gut, my gut instinct is to say, hey, we can't just have a discuss, a friendly discussion. You got to put, you got to submit some kind of a legal memorandum, you know, which, which spells this all out. So I, so I can follow this. And then, you know, and if, and if I have a question or, you know, the board has questions on it, then, then we, then we can talk about something at the council. But, but just, you know,
That's a good point. Have them put their, what you're saying is have them put their argument in writing.
Well, well, it, it, I gotta, you know,
Right, no, it's a good point.
Look, I, I, I don't practice in the area of zoning, you know. So I, I'm not probably not as, I'm sure I'm not as conversant in it as Attorney Power is. But so, so that, that's where I stand. But I, I would like to hear Jake's take on this because I think Jake does practice in this area, certainly more than I would. So what, what, what's that? Let's see what Jake has to say at this point. Jake, you get, you have any thoughts on that? The legal arguments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's a little, for me, it's a little more simple and I'm not, you know, I'm open for discussion, obviously. And Attorney Perry did a very nice job making an argument. It's just that, in my opinion so far, and I'm not sure that it can be changed. You know, I, I think that the, the, the non, the structure was abandoned in two thousand seventeen. It was abandoned involuntarily by way of being condemned. So I, that, that's going to be my opinion. It was abandoned well outside of the two-year period.
All right, so, yeah, so that, but did you, did, I mean, I don't want to get into a lot of legal, you know, verbiage here. But did Attorney Powers references to forty A in conjunction with our bylaw? Did that ring any bells with you while you were just listening to it?
No, while I was listening. And so I have two screens pulled up in front of me. I've got, I've got forty A and I've got our bylaws. So I'm just cross-referencing back and forth and I, I, I don't think it, I mean, I think our bylaws thirteen point three is relatively clear with regard to the use or structure. In this particular case, I'm focusing on the structure being discontinued or abandoned for a period of more than two years. And I, I, I think that the structure being condemned, unfortunately for the petitioner, is an abandonment.
Yeah, well, it, the
Chairman, if I may, can I just ask Jake a question?
Go ahead, Chris.
Just, I, I don't know anything about the legal side of this. And, and, and you and, you know, Rick know a lot more about the legal side. But do you have to, would a town have to meet both of these? Can, can, can the applicant hang his hat on just one of those? Like the, the use being not changed? Is, is that enough? Does, or does he have to, or does he, does he have to be both of these or just one in your opinion, Jake? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think just one, we can, in this particular case, again, I focusing on the structure because it's, it's, it's use or structure. And in this particular case, the structure is, in my opinion, been abandoned. I don't know if that answers your question, but I, I think just the wording in our bylaws says it could be, it can be either one of them because we use or, use or structure.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with that.
So if we see either one of them, can they see either one of them? I, I just want to make sure, you know, I'm not trying to play the devil's advocate here. I'm not on their side or your side or anybody's side. I'm just trying to figure out like, it, it's almost like there's two ways. That's, that's section thirteen point three has two roads. And I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, the applicant can just take one and he's good to go or, or the town has to have both. That's all. That's, I guess that's my point. So I'm not really sure.
Right.
Rick, if I could?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I agree with Jake. There, the, I did some research this afternoon on this and was looking, reading and, you know, the abandonment does, did, the clock did start ticking as far as everything I could find at the time the house was condemned. And at that point, after two years, you're no longer, you know, now the lot becomes unbuildable is it doesn't conform to any of the current zoning regulations. So the lot, after two years is no longer a viable building lot. I think that's where we stand with that right now from the research I did.
Which brings us, which brings us to a, you know, the application for the variance, in my opinion.
So can I respond to a few things? So to, to Chris's question, I think the bylaw is consistent with forty eight, section six. And I'm in no way saying that your bylaw is illegal. I think in third, section thirteen point two, there is an omission, which is that there is a provision in forty A, section six, that's separate with respect to preexisting, you know, nonconforming, single family and two-family dwellings. And that's just omitted from the bylaw. And that is a limitation on the town's authority and the board's authority. The, if that provision is applicable, then, you know, it would be our opinion that, that this has to be permitted as a matter of right. So I just wanted to make that clear. Again, I'm not in any way claiming that the bylaw is illegal. We come back to this question of the, of the two-year period. And so there is a, a, a history behind the terminology in, in the bylaw and also in, in forty A, you know, section six. And so that terminology in forty A, section six is uses and structures abandoned. That's one term. Or not used. And that's the other term for a period of two or more years. And there is a case, and I'm sorry, I don't have the site for it. But there is a case that equates in a very, you know, kind of similar situation, the word discontinued with not used. And, and the court's basically saying those, those two things mean the same thing. Okay, so there's no question the the use ceased before the two-year period. There's no question that the use was discontinued. So we're left with, was the structure abandoned because the use is conforming? It doesn't matter whether it stopped or not. You could, you know, and, and all other things being equal, you can make this use in the district as a matter of right. So the discontinuance of the use just doesn't matter. What does matter is whether the structure has been abandoned. And the terminology abandonment in this context connotes an intention by the owner to abandon it. And it can be abandoned in two years or it can be abandoned in five minutes. And once it's abandoned, it's abandoned. But abandonment means that the owner of the property has no intention of continuing, in this case, the structure. And that's clearly not the case here. So it was, the structure existed until twenty twenty. It was raised in this application, you know, followed well within, in the two years. There was no intention to, you know, to just turn this, you know, preexisting, nonconforming lot into, you know, an, an unbuildable lot.
Okay, all right. Thanks, thanks, thanks. Were you done? Do you have more Attorney Power?
No, no, I, so, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, before we go further, I just want to see if David George, the, the town planner, would like to be heard at this time. David, did you, did you have any thoughts or comments at this point?
Uh, thanks, Rick. I don't have any comments at this time, except to say that the building commissioner is also on this, this call. He made some of these determinations himself. Perhaps he, you, you may want to call on him.
Yes, David, would you like to be heard at this time? David McCray?
Yeah, I'm just turning the microphone on. Thanks. Yes, my information goes back to a file that was created on the house when originally a neighbor had called the building department in twenty seventeen about the house and its condition and that it had been abandoned for several years. No one's lived there. A visit was made by building apartment and the board of health. And the structural decay and mold in the house was extensive and completely unlivable. At that point, they filed, I guess, to the owner who may have been the offhand, I can't say who the owner was at the time. It was, a letter went out. It says, I don't have a copy of that letter in the file, that they should do something with the house, but it's uninhabitable completely and it can't be sold. Since a Realtor, I believe it was Wells Fargo possibly was trying to sell it. Or it was bought at auction by Wells Fargo at around that time. This is only told by a owner. And the rest of it's in a letter I had written.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. McCray. I appreciate that. All right, so I've got some thoughts about how to proceed. Before I give my thoughts to the board and to the applicant, is there anyone else on the board that would like to be heard at this time? Okay, so I, I just want a clarification, Attorney Power, before I go further. This application for variance, am I correct in understanding that this would allow you to rebuild the house exactly as it was before it was condemned?
Well, the, 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 the relief that was, is requested to, is to build it as proposed, which is not exactly the same. And I think Mr. Tetral alluded to the fact that the, the footprint is different.
All right, so I'm, so can you just enlighten me? Just help me out. What, what is the, what is the legal theory? The alternate, alternate legal theory or the primary legal theory for the application for variance?
So in, in, in this rather unusual case, this use is also an exempt use under the Dover amendment. And your zoning bylaw makes no provision, at least as far as I could tell, in the residence district for exempt uses. But we believe that under the Dover amendment, this use would be permissible on the property because the area and frontage, although not complying with the zoning bylaw, are sufficient to make the proposed use safe. So to put it another way, under the Dover amendment, uses are exempt from dimensional requirements to the extent that they exceed what is needed to, for health and safety types of considerations.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but is there any, is there any reason why the Dover amendment wasn't, which is, which for the other, other members of the board is forty A, section three, if I'm not mistaken? But is, is there any reason why that wasn't cited on the application?
Well, so, yes. So we, we wound up in, in front of the, the board on the building inspector's determination in as to the preexisting, nonconforming. Excuse me for a second. My screen just went, on the preexisting, nonconforming. And, and we were attempting to address that with the board because in the absence of a provision under the zoning bylaw, there's no clear procedure as to how to proceed in Rottland with an exempt use.
Okay.
So, and again, if, if the board is of the view, which I hope it's not, but if the board is of the view that none of these applications can That none of these applications can be granted, that we would then proceed under the Dover Amendment. You know, for the same use and we would have to work out a procedure. The cases are kind of varied as to whether that's the building inspector or the planning board. It's usually not the zoning board of appeals. But again, that would, we would have to work out a procedure with with the town to. To handle the what effectively is a site plan review.
Okay, so now now skipping ahead to the. Appeal of the decision of the building inspector, which is the third application. It says, single family residents may be reconstructed as a matter of right. Is that as the building is proposed or the building as it originally was?
The the building as proposed and that's that comes back to what I said about the omission. In the bylaw, the bylaw does not. Include the provision in forty A, section six relating to. The reconstruction of single family and two 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 family. Structures and that's permitted as a matter of right under forty A, section six. It's just. It's just an omission.
Rick. Just looking at the Dover Amendment here. And it states, you know, that, yeah, they are certain vote, but that it. They are. That such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning. The bulk and height structures and determining yard size, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, building, coverage requirements. It does not seem to provide relief from the fact that the lot itself is now, you know, is nonconforming. So I don't believe the Dover, just from this perusal. Would be would grant them relief from our zoning. In this case.
Yeah, it's it's a little vague. It it's it gives it gives these applicants certain rights and then it seems to take them take them away a little bit. So I I think I think it's. This is a pure legal issue, you know. Once we get all the facts, it's a real pure legal issue as to whether whether, you know, forty eight, three, the Dover Amendment. You know, would give the applicant the relief they're looking for. All right, so. My my thought is that we've got a lot of complex legal legal issues here. I am proposing to the board that. I, as well as any of the other board members that want to want to help me on this. That we put we put this all in a nice, easy, easy to understand format. And we submit we we submit this to town council. Because we got some pretty sophisticated legal issues here. Go ahead, Chris.
Should we should we just make sure we get all their legal arguments that they would want us to send in? Kind of as evidence, if you will.
Right, well, well, I I think that's a good idea, but I I that I think I have a pretty good handle on them. But let's just say that I missed something and I wrote it out, or maybe Art helped me, or maybe Jake worked on it. Let's say we missed something. This is not, this is not town council's first rodeo. They've seen this issue before. And they they if I if we just present the facts and we don't even talk about the legal issues. They they're going to be able to give us a coherent legal opinion. I'm I'm just saying, you know, I I know what you're saying. We don't want to miss anything, but I think it would work out if we did it that way.
You know, and and I I trust me, I know you and Jacob know every, you know, understand this much better than I do. I just want to make sure that we're not, the applicant's not feeling like he should have had the opportunity to submit something in addition. You know, to to what he said tonight and just just to make sure we've got a basis covered, that's all.
Well, well, the second, the second part of my proposal is certainly, you know, the applicant would would be. Welcome to submit anything they wanted. And, you know, that I I think it almost goes without saying, but I'm going to say, yeah, they I think they they would have the opportunity to do that. I I think there are enough legal issues that I I I think that's the direction we should go in. I mean. I I think Jake summed it up very nicely. Look, it we got the facts here. It doesn't seem to fit into our bylaw. Let's just deny it. I'm I'm willing to, you know, go a little further. And not not that you did anything, you know, not that I didn't appreciate, you know, your comments, Jake, but. I I was kind of willing to go another step and maybe. You know, see, see what town council thought about it. And at this point, Jake, we're talking about you, so why don't you step in and give me your thoughts?
No, no problem, Rick. I think that that's extremely fair to the applicants and they have an excellent attorney that will have the ability to. Submit a memo or a brief or a letter or whatever he wants to to put together and. That'll give another. Kind of educated set of eyes, you know, in town council to take a look at it. I agree with that.
Right, okay, so at at this point, I just, because I have some, we have people that have been waiting patiently at Butters. And I we got kind of a flurry of letters. Well, the first the first thing I want to do is I I just want to read a couple of things into the record. We we I'm not going to read the whole thing, but we have a a letter from. The planning board. It's authored by David George and David McCray. And the I'll certainly provide this to the applicant. In a timely manner, but it 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 basically says. That. Sections thirteen, two and thirteen, five do not allow do not allow us to approve this application. It says a couple of other things, but that's that's it pretty much sums up the argument that they made verbally. And I also have a letter dated April fourteenth, which is, of course, today. From Norman Norman Anderson, who's the chair of the Rutland Planning Board. And. He. He. I'm just going to read it. Regarding twenty nine Berry Paxton Road, the board had concerns. With the findings of fact to support the variance and believes that more information should be provided to justify the hardship. So so the planning board was 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 opining that. Given the facts of the application, given the facts that that are on the ground. That they they would have a hard time, you know, granting. Relief based on hardship without without more and 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 I and that's fine. And I think we would have gotten to that issue eventually. I just don't think we've even gotten to that issue yet. So at at this point, are there any Butters present who wish to be heard at this time? Okay, so what I'm going to do is look through my papers. And see if I can find.
Excuse me, Rick, if I could, there is a woman named Christina. Christina's eye patch, she has her hand up. At least she's trying to be heard.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were just going to speak up verbally.
Sorry.
Christina, could you identify yourself with your name and your address and just tell us, you know. What what your interest is in this case?
Sure, and I apologize. I raised my hand because I didn't want to speak over anyone else.
I couldn't on the screen, that's why.
That's okay. Christina Suhaki, my husband Dennis Suhaki, we are the owners of twenty three Berry Paxton Road, the property. Abutting twenty nine, which is the the business zone property. My understanding of the business zone, we are not in a business zone district. We just happen to apply for. Spot zone. We have we have a spot zone. We applied for a business zoning way back. There were a lot of stipulations. It was one of these that was agreed upon. We would not have customers coming, no traffic. It was just to protect my husband's landscaping business. I do, I sent a letter to the. Well, I sent it to the town and I'm hoping that the board received it today. I strongly oppose this with due respect to these people that would like to build this structure. To claim it's a single family home, I believe is extremely far fetched. The home that was originally on the property was approximately tw- two thousand square feet. The site plan that was provided by the by this organization doesn't state how big this building is. If I were to look at the site plan, my calculations is pretty close to a five thousand plus square foot building. Correct me if I'm wrong. Due to the fact that it's two story, it's a large building. It is not a single family home. There are no homes on this entire road that are that size. It's a business and I will tell you, I I I have the certificate of organization of this company. And it's it's a business. It's not, I I understand it's a good, it's for a good cause. We propose that the fact that this road. We've been here thirty three years. There have been so many car accidents due to that curve on the on the Paxton side. It's scary sometimes to pull into our own driveways because of the traffic. And I can tell you, I've witnessed multiple car accidents. When my neighbors are trying to pull over into their driveway and someone nearly smashes into them. I've seen a car roll down the road. Literally, no lie. So we have very many concerns with the fact that there will be increased traffic. The fact that it really is not a safe area. This is still a very residential area and so to be bringing in a business that is going to be run twenty four seven. The parking arrangement that is proposed is going to have headlights shining into our homes. If they have handicapped vans, we're going to be hearing the beeping of those vans. That's concerning. I have, can I have my glasses? If I were to look at the application where it says. Excuse me, I have to find it now, that this proposition will not be detrimental to. Our area. I I strongly disagree. Again, this is residential. They're going to have people coming in and out. So I I don't believe that that to claim that it's not detrimental and isn't changing our areas is completely wrong. It also says that it's the, there are no new nonconformities. I again will disagree. The house that was there was only two thousand square feet. What is being proposed is much larger. It is not a single family home. It is a business. And. We have concerns about water runoff coming into our property. We've always had problems with the neighbors. It's a very wet land. That cellar was pumped twenty four seven, year round. I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
The biggest thing that that myself and we have is is the sightline. You know, we've been out there, we've had two cars cut into three pieces from from being head on. Accidents and we're getting tired of going out there and having to be the first ones. You know, to to deal with this, not to mention all the others that are hitting the trees. I've had friends who died a hundred feet from that driveway. We have had, we could tell you what, you know, accidents for for our for hours, what's happened right here in this corner. You know, cars coming around hitting the school buses, trailer trucks, mailmen. Almost ourselves. I mean, it's it's a very dangerous corner. And this is, like she said, there are times we can't pull into our driveway because we know what's behind us. We know what to what to watch out for. But people coming into this place, you know, they wouldn't know that and and it's and it would be very. Very detrimental for everybody, not to mention trying to pull out is is another issue. Sightline is a very important thing in in the the clear cutting. In order in order to get this to fit in the property. They have to cut every tree, I would imagine, because I there's not much room if they did not. And and put this commercial building with a parking lots and parking and everything all all up front. That would not fit at all in a residential area.
Excuse me, I would also like to add that that's article three, section thirteen, three, which is the abandonment. And it states, in the event a nonconforming use or structure has been discontinued or abandoned for a period of more than two years. It shall lose its conforming status, nonconforming status, excuse me.
That issue, we're we're we've been talking about that issue.
Right, I'd like to, I just want to add to that. Yes, I understand in it was abandoned and was condemned, but it has been abandoned for at least. Seven years, I think. I believe at least in two thousand fourteen is when that property was abandoned. And the house sat empty. It was not used. That property has not had any activity. The house just sat there and rotted away. And to add to that. I I just, I feel like that it is documented somewhere that that property was abandoned. I would also, in due respect to the people who now own that property. I have an email communication with my Realtor and the Realtor that sold that property. And we actually put an offer on that house at multiple times. And the last one was this January and we put a cash offer offer of twenty thousand dollars. It was rejected because they had received an offer from this company. And then we found out it was sold for ten thousand dollars, which was a bit confusing when we offered twenty. I the I have. Not document, I have documentation of a conversation through email between the two Realtors. Our Realtor asked the Realtor who sold the property, how did this happen? And I will quote, it says. The Realtor replied, it was renegotiated after we found out the lot was not buildable. So these people purchased the land knowing fully well that it was not buildable. And who buys a piece of property for ten thousand dollars if they think it's buildable? I I think that's crazy. So I I think all around, I could go on. I did submit a letter and I think it's pretty thorough. As to our complaints, yes. As to why that shouldn't happen.
Anyone who doesn't yet have the letter will get the letter.
Okay.
To the applicant as well. Okay, all right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? Any other Butters or interested persons who would like to be heard at this time? Okay, I don't hear any. Am I missing anybody?
Hi, I'm also on a butter. My name is Evan Sawyer. I'm at forty Berry Paxton and I haven't yet built, but I also.
What can I, what what, where do you live now?
Forty Berry Paxton on the other side of the street.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I haven't yet built, but I have had an opportunity to discuss with my neighbors and have warm welcomes from neighbors. And I would say that I just want to echo those comments that I think one of the biggest concerns that those folks have around there is the. Severity of the curve is such that there are a number of accidents routinely and they have to act as first responders on that road. And I would say that that's just something that is had been something I've heard from from everybody that lives in that area repeatedly. So I I just think it's worth noting that that the traffic and the speed of the road is, you know, and the severity of that curve is. Important for the amount of traffic that this site is proposed with, but respectfully submitted and thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, would anyone else like to be heard at this time?
Hi, yes, hi, this is Terry Lee Jensen, twenty Berry Paxton Road. I live across the street from this proposed. Development and or housing. And I just want to chime in with the traffic. It is literally a nightmare on this road. It's ridiculous. The amount of traffic is, I mean, in the mornings, I can see people going by. They're not paying attention. They're doing everything but driving. They're. Brushing their teeth, they're combing their hair, they're shaving, you name it, that's what they're doing. Now with the nice weather coming, we have a lot of campers coming to and from these campsites. And I know there have been several times when I, you know, heard screeching because. You know, we're trying to pull into driveways. They're not paying attention and it's it's just a nightmare. And I mean, I echo everything that Christina has said in Evan. I think it's just, it would be a disaster to have this. Proposed construction across the street. I don't believe also that. What they say it's going to be is all that it's going to be. I mean, maybe they're going to build it and only have five people living there. But who's to say that later down the line that, you know, they're going to expand and we're going to get, you know, twelve, fifteen, twenty people. Living there and then the cars coming in and out, three shifts being staffed twenty four seven. I mean, that's. You know, the lights coming on at night and and, you know, vans backing up, everything that Christina has said, I completely agree with. And I would just, I I believe that it's a great organization. And I think it's, you know, worthy of finding a place, but I don't believe that twenty nine Berry Paxton Road is the place. I think there are plenty of other parcels in Rutland and Alba, if it's not in Rutland. Around the surrounding towns, there are plenty of. And albeit if it's not in Rutland, uh, around the surrounding towns, there are plenty of, um, places that this, uh, uh, construction could go. And, um, I believe that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Would anyone else like to be heard at this time?
Mike, Mike Suhaqui. I also live with, uh, Christina, um, his, uh, her son. On Twenty-three Berry Paxton Road. Uh, I just have the same concerns. I was, uh, one of the first people who will be on the bus. Um, we would have to cross the road. And the amount of times I've been hit almost personally just trying to cross the road is, uh, uh, a lot, too much. Um, and I also, uh, my window will be facing right them, right at their residence there. And I'd be concerned about the, the headlights coming in twenty-four seven or whenever they come in. But really, the safety is the big one, as, uh, everyone else has talked about.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. Um, and would anyone else like to be heard? Okay, so at this point, I, I, I think that I, I, I want to get, um, some in, I want to get some input from town council. So what we will do is we will, we will continue this. Tamika, I, I do not believe is, is on at the moment. So let me take a look at the calendar. So I believe we have another meeting, uh, May fifth, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Chairman, if.
Yeah.
I would, I don't know. Do you meet twice a month?
No, we don't meet on a regular basis if that was needed.
So, uh, I think my suggestion would be, uh, if the board is okay with that, to continue it to a later date. And the reason for that is, um, first, you know, I would like to submit a memorandum to the board for the benefit of town council. But more importantly, um, I think having some additional time will enable us or the developer's team to look at some of the issues that have been raised by the Butters. And perhaps, uh, and I don't know that can be or can't be, but at least attempt to alleviate some of those concerns in terms of design changes. And additionally, you know, it may be appropriate at this point to bring the, the Forty A Section Three, you know, exempt use into the mix. If town council were to say, you know, by way of example, well, you know, the applications, you know, must be denied, but, uh, it can proceed as a, as an exempt use. And create a, you know, a process by which that can be heard. And I think all of that is going to take, you know, more than three weeks to accomplish. So I would look a little closer to, um, to the middle or the end of May.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we do it on May fifth. We just happen to have another meeting on May fifth, but I appreciate your sentiments. So if, if, uh, I don't want to run into Memorial Day, the, that whole area. Do you, I was, I'm looking at Wednesday, uh, May nineteenth, or, or do you want to go into June? What are you thinking? What, as far as your schedule?
Are you asking me?
Yes, Attorney Power. Yeah.
I think, uh, the, the nineteenth should be adequate. That's a month and a few days.
Right. All right. So, um, could I put this, put that, throw that date out for the rest of the board, uh, May nineteenth? Which would be two, uh, two weeks after our next meeting. Um, does, does that date seem to work for everybody?
Sure, Rick. What's the, what's our timeline on having to do stuff on this?
Grant extensions as necessary.
Yeah.
And yeah, but the applicant just has to grant the extension.
Yeah, I think, I think we're pretty good on time. If, if we were, I'll take a look at the, the timeline. If we need an extension, we'll, we'll get one. But yeah, but does the, does the nineteenth seem to work, which is really right around the corner?
Fine with me.
Fine with me.
Okay.
Fine with me.
All right. So we will, we will continue this hearing until May nineteenth at six-thirty. Okay, so, um, yeah, yeah.
I, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Second?
May nineteen, six-thirty.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we will, we will meet again, uh, Wednesday, May nineteenth at six-thirty. All right, anything, anything further in closing Attorney Power at this point?
Uh, no, thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening and, uh, we'll see you on the nineteenth.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Lord.
Have a good night, guys.
All right. So then the next item on the agenda is Emily and Gwen Glenn Travion, and I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. Uh, seeking a special permit to place a mobile home temporarily on the property at Ninety Bushy Lane. So I, I have the application here. It just says, "We are building a new home on our property. We are seeking temporary housing." Tell, it's temporary housing. Trying to read the handwriting. But I, I think the thrust of it is that it, it, it falls within our bylaw where we, we could grant the temporary house, you know, temporary use of this mobile home for up to a year. So, uh, am I, to the applicants, I've done it. First of all, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Close, Travalian. No worries. It happens all the time.
You know what I, you know what I do? I, I, I write it out phonetically because I'll probably still mess it up, but.
That's okay. Don't worry.
Okay, so have I, have I stated this more or less correctly?
You have. That's correct. Yes. So we, we have, we've purchased, um, back in September, we purchased, um, forty acres at Ninety Bushy Lane that we are building our new home on. Given, um, sort of the, the pandemic and COVID, um, it, it's, um, it's looking like we're going to need a temporary mobile home on the land during the building process. We anticipate starting building in about three weeks with the foundation and, um, hope to be done well before a year, um, but would like to place a temporary mobile home up there just so, we're currently staying with family and our, we have three young children who are, um, going to school in the district and just want to kind of have a little bit more normalcy back into their life. And we think having the mobile home on the land will help us do that.
Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm certainly going to open this up to the board, but, um, I just, just want to uh, read a portion of a letter dated today from Norman Anderson, the Chair of the Planning Board. And he says, um, for the Ninety Bushy Lane application, the board, this is the planning board, the board commented that it would like to see the permit conditioned for a period of time. So do you, do you have any, any ballpark estimate on how, how long you would need this?
Um, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, likely around nine months, um, during the building period, no more than a year. We also have a construction loan with the bank, which requires us to finish building in a year. Um, so between nine to twelve months.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. All right. So at this time, I, Chris, do you, do you have any thoughts or comments at this time on this application, Chris?
Um, not, not, not specifically, just a couple of things, um, regarding the timeline. Building materials are very difficult to get right now. And I would really caution everyone on the timeframe here. Are you saying, Rick, that we have a twelve-month limitation?
All right. So I'm looking at.
What's the max we can do?
Yeah, well, I, it's four, it's, it's Section fourteen C. So it says, um, maybe issued for a period of one year. Yeah, yeah, it, it's debatable as to, I mean, I'd have to look to see if we have the authority to extend it. My gut reaction is we do. But, but, but the, the bylaw says a year.
Rick, sorry to cut in on this. Uh, the building inspector still on this call?
Yeah.
I believe he's equipped to answer that question in terms of extensions of the time period.
Please, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe I read, uh, I believe you can extend it if they had written, uh, reason for why they need an extension.
Yeah, yeah, it seems reasonable. Sure.
You would think, yeah. And right now, being the COVID, and it, and it's just unbelievable trying to get all types of building materials. It's, it's almost very, it's insane. So.
Right.
To give you guys a, not the, not the pressure at all.
No worries.
The, the other thing, was there a house on this property prior to this, or is this just?
Nope.
Making land and.
Yeah, so, um, the previous owner, um, was going to put a home on it. I don't know, you know, what happened in her personal life, but that, that changed. And then she, um, decided to sell the lot. So it was, um, she had some building plans ready to go, but, um, she never did, did build on it. There was septic and electric already on, um, the property. Um, and we have already installed a well, so the mobile home will utilize all of the existing utilities that are already on the property. So we've sort of already got that, that set up and established, but there's, there's nothing, there's nothing on the land right now.
Yeah, I saw that. Um, Kevin Quinn, he's a good guy. Did the, uh, drawing here for you.
Yeah, he is. Good, good to work with.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin's a good man. He did that temporary distribution box there for you to tie that into the, to your permanent septic.
Yep.
And, and then, you know, you get to cut over there. And I'm sure the board of health will keep up the pace on that. You know, we, we, you know, I would just suggest, you know, something that, you know, the board of health inspects these systems, just like they would on a, on a normal permanent home that they file for those app, those, those permits. Uh, make sure that, you know, obviously all the electrical have to get permitted to bring power to the trailer on a temporary, permanent basis. Same thing with the water and whatnot. So as long as, you know, um, the only, the only, the only thing, I, I recall a property in Rutland that they wouldn't let them put the trailer on the house. It was down on fifty-six, just before Bill's garage on the right. Do you guys remember that and why they wouldn't let the guy have a, a, a trailer on his property there to build his house? Am I just thinking kind of wacky here? Is it, was it, does anybody remember that case?
Yeah, I don't.
It's a, it's kind of a flat home. It's kind of like a ranch, kind of, it's pretty, it's got a little separate garage. I, I remember the two guy, you can see it. So it's not very old. Um, it was probably built in the last five to ten years. And I, and I know there was something, and it, and it didn't come to the board here, Rick. And, you know, I, we've been on since oh-five. I mean.
Chris, is that right next to the gas station, like two doors up?
I, I think it's three houses before the gas, because, because right next to the gas station is old man, you know. Then I think his son lives there. And I think it's the one right before that one.
Yeah, so that's a friend of mine. That's, um, yeah, he, I grew up with him in Auburn, so.
Okay.
But he built, he tore the other house down, his, his aunt's house. He tore that down, built that new one.
All right. And did, did he want to have a trailer there or something?
We lived in Auburn at the time, so I don't think so.
All right, maybe I must have mistaken them. Just want to make sure we're not, you know, gonna do something that.
Thanks. All right. Thanks. Thanks a lot, Chris. Um, Bob, did you, did you want to comment on this application?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it, so I'm good.
Yeah. Um, Paul, how about, how about you? Would you like to talk at this time, please?
Yeah, I'd like the project. Um, I, just my own experiences and my, uh, stuff is that I agree with Chris one hundred percent. Don't, that one-year timeline might, maybe tough to hit. Yeah, so I would not be opposed to, you know, extending this if needed.
Oh, sure. Thanks.
Hope we don't have to extend it, because I, I'm guessing with our three kids, we won't want to be in the mobile home.
We can get in the mobile home. You'll be buying another house before that house. But I, I would put it in there for the twelve months though.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Jake, uh, would you like to be heard at this time?
Sounds very reasonable to me. No, I'm all set.
Okay. All right. So, so I don't, I don't really think we need to have a whole lot of discussion on this. Do I hear a motion to put this to a vote for twelve months? For a twelve month. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll vote on, um, granting this application for a twelve-month period. And if, if we need to, need to revisit it for an extension, we can do it as, as we need to. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye, Chris Sennical.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, I probably should have said the voting members are Chris, um, Bob and myself, but, uh, you're right, you were kind enough to identify yourselves, me out, which I appreciate. Okay, all right. So, um, Mr. and Mrs. Travalian, which I.
Good job. Nice.
All right. So we, we have granted your application. And, um, we, we will issue a decision within two weeks. We'll probably do it within one week.
Okay.
And, um, and at that, at that point, there will be a twenty-day appeal period. After that appeal period, then, then you can record this. It, it will be effective. So you, you can go to the town clerk. All right, so.
You guys, you guys understand that process? Once, once we, once we all sign off on this, there's a twenty-one day appeal period for anybody.
Okay, so you have to hold, you have to hold off for that before.
Yeah, once that appeal period is over with, then you can go up to the building inspector, you'll be able to get your, as long as nobody appeals this in, in that twenty-one day period. Then you go up to the building inspector and you can get your permit.
Yeah, no, no one, I'm pretty sure no one's going to appeal it, but it's, it's a statute. It has, it has, we have to wait that time.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, would, would, um, you know, Chris, Chris or Bob, could, could I impose on you to maybe write this particular decision? If, I'll work on the other one.
I don't mind doing it.
Okay, I appreciate.
While I'll do it if you want.
I appreciate that, Chris. And I'll, I'll work, I'll work on the other, the other application while we're doing it.
Chris, do you have one to work on?
You know, I, I've got some old ones. It's been a while since I've written one. I'll dig back in the thing. If I don't, I'll give you, I'll shoot you an email, Bob.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Okay, so, um, so this matter is concluded. The, the board is going to talk about some other matters. So you're free to, to sign off, or, or it's a public meeting. You're, you're welcome to stay as well.
No, I'll just, we'll just say thank you very much. We appreciate it and, um, have a good night.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Okay, so I, I think the only additional business is approving the minutes from the April seventh meeting, which is like a week ago. So, um, has anyone had a, had a chance to, um, take a look at this?
I did, I did, Rick. You know, the only comment I had, it was related to my, my comment, which was about the trees. And the only reason I was mentioning the trees was because we had that like thirty-foot buffer above the trees that you could have the tower be that size. So I wasn't sure. That's really what I was talking about, was a thirty-foot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, distance above the trees.
Well, does, does it, does this, does the, uh, do the minutes need to be modified?
No, I just, I mean, it, because it looks kind of foolish, but, you know, I was talking about trees. But other than that, I'm good. So the, um, but it was interesting that the other tower is six hundred and sixty feet though, huh? Did you see that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that, yeah, that's, that's, you can see that from miles away.
Yeah, and that thing has lights that light up all, you know, all night long.
Are you seeing Chris?
I do. But I like my cell coverage, because before that thing was there, I couldn't even talk on a cell phone at my house, so I'm okay with it.
Sure. Yeah, it was probably really needed at the time that it was erected, even though it's tall. Okay, so is there any other business that the board needs to talk about at this point?
We just going to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And do, do we have to amend them for, for your comments? Bob, are we good with the way they are?
We'll go with the verbal amendment?
The verbal amendment.
Well, we verbally, and then, then Bob, didn't you just verbally amend it?
Yeah.
We can accept, do a motion to accept the minutes as verbally amended during the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to verbally accept, uh, to, to accept the, of the meeting, uh, last week's meeting as verbally amended by Mr. Paulson.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right. So the minutes are accepted. All right. So I gotta, gotta have it myself. Thank you, Chris. So is it now, is there any other, other business that we need to consider at this time?
Rick, if I could there on that, um, just want to kind of respond.
Um, Rick, if I could there on that, um, just want to kind of respond to your email today to Tamika. And I did send you a, a blurb, the email personally, um, regarding the open meeting law.
Sure.
And I pulled this, did you get the chance to look at what I had emailed you?
Was that from Laura Haley?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw, I read it, sure.
Okay.
I looked at it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just want to say that, you know, it appears, you know, from her, this is the guide that's written um, on the open meeting law by Laura Haley, published in twenty seventeen. That it is okay to extend, to exchange um or ask for information. The open meeting law violations come in when we discuss it or give opinion on it. So like my request today, I feel was well within even um Chris's request today was well within. But to give any opinion on the information you receive would definitely be a violation. So I think we're, just for clarification on that.
All right, I I think that your clarification was very well, well taken and uh and I, I am going to, I I will, I will validate, I'm going to validate your, your uh comments on that. For for, so for fu, for future future proceedings, I I think uh that is is perfectly acceptable to request information by by email.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, I just want us all to be on the same page, what is okay and what is.
I I I appreciate that. I, it was so much on today and you know, for the, that I, it did, it just kind of slipped my mind and I'm really glad you brought it up. So I, I I think, I think, uh, yeah, I'm I'm behind you on that one.
You're okay, all right, super.
Okay, so we, we, I think we're all good on that. Okay.
Yeah, no, I think fact finding, I think, is not an issue, just, just.
Yeah, no, no, I I I agree with that and I I think, I think Paul is right on that and I think you were right on that. Okay, all right, so with that, do we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye, aye, all opposed? All right, so we will, we are adjourned for the evening.